Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, September 30th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. We have a presentation and a consent agenda item or two to talk about. We're going to start with our update from Visit Quad Cities. So we're glad that you all have joined us. David Harrell, the President and CEO. Joan Kranovich, the Vice President in Charge of Business Growth and Direction. Mindy Chapman, Vice President in Charge of Finance and Administration. Katrina Koenig, Director of Brand and Content Strategy. And they all wear other hats as well as working on the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program and other things. It's a lean machine, but we're going to learn a little bit more about it tonight. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle, I figured I'd put myself on a stopwatch, right? Probably was. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you this evening. Mayor Gallagher, Members of Council, Decker, professional team. Just want to say thank you. We are incredibly grateful for the wonderful relationship and partnership that we have with the City of Bettendorf. We've had a longstanding relationship since 1990. So wow, coming up on 35 years and can't thank you enough for everything that you do for for us. Mayor, thank you for introducing my amazing team. I had planned on doing that, but we don't need to boost up their egos anymore. But I'm grateful for their support. And quite frankly, these three, along with our professional team, are the ones making it all happen. They do all the work and it's a pleasure to serve alongside them. So a few things that I wanted to share with you. Just want to make sure the slides are working as an update. And then when I when I wrap up, happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'll roll through a lot of these slides pretty pretty quickly since you've got familiarity with us. We always like to lead with our our mission and our vision and our brand promise. We have a belonging statement in terms of trying to make sure that we are continuing to foster an inclusive and welcoming environment in the Quad Cities from a regional destination perspective. The one thing I really want to hopefully drive home tonight with with all of you is capital investment through outside dollars is really kind of the best kind of revenue that our community receives in our in our humble opinion. The dollars that are driven by tourism benefit quality of life. Certainly, they they provide economic development, growth, opportunities and positioning. But we all need to continually remind ourselves that when people are coming here and they're spending dollars in our community, you all are using these revenues to reinvest to make sure that the City of Bettendorf and the entire Quad Cities region is doing the things that we all need to do from a quality of life and quality of perspective, quality of place So a little bit about Iowa from a tourism perspective. It's it's very healthy. We're excited about where the future is heading under Director Debbie Durham's leadership, Amy Ziegler, Governor Reynolds. But there's been a commitment to tourism spending and investment, and it's definitely yielding very positive results. You'll see some of these facts. I'm not going to read them all. The one thing that, you know, we do want to, you know, hit home, I think a lot of people don't realize the amount of jobs that tourism definitely sustains, about 70,000 in the state of Iowa alone, and about 1.2 billion in state and local tax revenues are generated on an annualized basis just through Travel Iowa as as our partner. From a local perspective within our region, this is essentially our visitor economy as a as a snapshot. Some of the Iowa numbers are forthcoming. We just received Illinois. This is actually from last year, so we'll update these sometime in November. But we're about a $1.3 billion visitor economy. You'll see the tax generation that we're driving in both states and and supporting about 9,000-plus jobs within the region. And these are all numbers to Tourism Economics, DCO, which is IDA's counterpart, and IEDA. This is an important slide, and I want to spend a few minutes on this. And it's something that the mayor has seen within our board meetings. And we talk about this a lot from a community standpoint. This is really the work of what Visit Quad Cities is doing, you know, day day out. I think the misnomer was our job was just heads in beds, but in reality, nothing really happens in our community unless you have somebody visit first. That's the key. And quite frankly, that's going to lead to a broader economic development relationship. So it all starts with a visit. Hopefully, that's going to lead to somebody living here, working here, investing here. And so our role, you know, really is to work this wheel as much as we can because all of these things are interconnected. If we get somebody to to visit here, hopefully, that's going to drive the revenue that we need. Hopefully, they're going to take a potential job. Hopefully, those jobs will continually become investment tools for for our region and all of our communities within the QC. And and our role at Visit Quad Cities is to ensure that these things are happening, right, from the economic development perspective. So we are an economic development driver. We're we're an organization that that is doing more than just filling up hotels and hopefully impacting the hospitality industry. We talk a lot about how tourism leads to talent, and we firmly, you know, believe in that. And this brand management, how we're being good stewards of place, but then also being a promotion and sales, you know, driver are critical to the work that we do on a daily basis. We're an accredited organization at the global level. This is an important distinction because there's only 240 destinations around the world that have this. There are probably, give or take, about 800 destination organizations around the United States, so not everyone has this accreditation. About 110 criteria goes into this. I'm really proud of the work of our our board and our team to be able to have this seal. But what this means is we operate at a very high level of standard and excellence. So the investment that you're providing into our organization not only is producing an ROI, but hopefully you realize that this is money well spent in a nonprofit that is doing it the right way.
Dave, when's the first time we became accredited?
We, actually, eight years ago. And so we just received a four-year renewal cycle. So just got that done in July. So for another four years, it'll that accreditation will take us.
Thanks, sir.
This is really our framework. Our pillars are destination marketing, tourism development, and visitor experience. We'll talk about this in a little bit more detail. But but these are the things that really, you know, drive our organization until we're operating on on a daily basis in terms of the value that we're providing back to the community. We're really into research and insights, and we have a couple of different mechanisms that we use. We use one thing called the Event Impact Calculator. This is through Tourism Economics and Destinations International. We measure every piece of business that we go after and recruit and host. This is where we come up with our numbers. But these numbers are actually through a company that we work with called Datify. Datify is essentially one of the leading cutting-edge companies in the United States. They do geolocation, and we're basically tracking people all on these devices. And we can tell you who's in our community, where they are, what they're doing, and demographic information. We have over 300 points of interest in the Quad Cities that have been polygoned, and that could be downtown Bettendorf, that could be the Isle, that could be TBK Bank Sports Complex, the Family Museum, the city as a whole. So we are looking at these insights every day, and we're making database decisions on marketing and advertising. In FY '24, our fiscal year, we generated 6.7 million trips or visits into the Quad Cities, representing 13.5 million visitor days with with average length of stay being two days. This is from people beyond a 50-mile radius. So we're tracking all of this data. It's great research and information, but we can use it to our advantage as we're thinking about how we want to try to boost visitation, but also developers, if you're thinking about economic development, to make sure that you've got the data that you need. We talk a lot about source markets. These are the markets where people are visiting from and experiencing the Quad Cities. Chicago is still kind of our bread and butter, Chicago and and the suburban markets. But you'll see our top 10 DMAs from last fiscal year. So Chicago, Cedar, Waterloo, that corridor, Des Moines, Peoria, Rockford. This will ebb and flow based on the marketing and advertising that we're doing, the events that we're hosting. But you'll get a feel for these DMAs, again, 50 miles beyond Quad Cities proper. This is who's coming here on a regular basis. A couple of highlights, there's a lot of bullets here, but I do want to touch on a few things in FY '24. We drove over $30 million in direct economic impact through meetings, conventions, sporting events, things that we directly recruited and brought in to to the market. So we are your sales and marketing engine. Number two, we generated 33 million-plus advertising impressions through advertising campaigns, outbound things that we are trying to do to create a lot of value in terms of generating impressions. And then Earn Media, these are just opportunities to get people talking about the Quad Cities. We generated about 3.68 million in ad equivalency and 124 mentions. We've supported over 1,000 events in the Quad Cities through our channels. We generated over 400,000 website visitor sessions, and we've got 200 certified tourism ambassadors, which is a key piece of what we're trying to do to hopefully deliver a stronger visitor experience in the QC. To give you a little feel for some of the things that we're doing from advertising perspective, we want to show a couple visuals. This is a plan that we did, actually, the Illinois Office of Tourism helped fund this. We did a program of work with the Chicago Transit Authority, you know, bus benches, signage, internal, external, all throughout the Chicago market in the spring and summer. We got a lot of positive feedback through these campaigns, had a lot of visibility in Chicago. This is all like values-based marketing, where we're talking about, you know, things that are important to the Quad Cities, right? It's it's about visitation, but sometimes it's a little bit, you know, broader than that. So we are constantly trying to put campaigns into place to effectuate not only visitation, but to try to drive brand visibility in the things that we're doing. And you'll see a little video snapshot hopefully rolling, and this is all digital advertising. We have an advertising agency at Austin, Texas, that we work with. That's one of the foremost leaders in this space that is helping us drive this kind of awareness. Advocacy is a huge piece of what we do. We spend a lot of time in Des Moines. We spend a lot of time in Springfield advocating for our visitor economy, the stakeholders that are connected to it, and and tourism. So there is a statewide agency, Travel Iowa. There's a statewide agency in Joy, Illinois, and we work very closely with them hand in hand to make sure that we're doing things to leverage those relationships and those opportunities and bring them back to the Quad Cities. We have a lot of tourism products. Some of these things you've heard of, you know, right now, we just we had a press release that went out earlier today to announce Museum Month in the month of October. So that's a a great promotion for us. We've got Restaurant Week, but then we also have these experiential, self-guided kind of products, these tours that we've created from the Coffee Trail to the Public Art Trail to the Ale Trail. We work closely with the company on QC Passport, which is all about historical things that are happening in the Quad Cities because that's cultural tourism is a big piece of what we do. And just launch the the John Deere Trail. These are innovative products that we that we own, with the exception of Passport, that we're trying to do to create hopefully experiences for people that are visiting, but then also local residents, trying to make sure that our Quad Citizens have incredible opportunities to to experience. Want to share a little bit about our budget. Revenue for FY '25 is about 2.3 million. You'll see the majority of that flow comes through investments like yourself. So we're grateful for those municipal investments, those county investments. You'll see the state of Illinois at 14.7 million. That's through a program that's been around literally since the mid-'80s that helps fund 38 destination organizations around the state of Illinois. And so even though Illinois is funding us, it's also benefiting, you know, Iowa by nature of of what we do. So that's a snapshot of our revenue. You'll see our expenses. This is going to ebb and flow based on the things that that we're hosting. Every year, you'll see the amount of percentage we're spending on promotion and marketing and Cubs and sports marketing, which is always going to probably go up and down just depending on the various events that that we're hosting as well. So about 2.4. We're still deficit spending as an organization. We haven't fully recovered out of COVID. A lot of destination organizations are still facing that particular challenge as as we are. I wanted to show you this grid and talk a little bit about the the local public sector investments that that come in to come into Visit Quad Cities. So this is a look at FY '24. You'll see Bettendorf and where it landed last fiscal year for us, a significant amount of revenue coming from the City of Bettendorf through 25% of your hotel motel taxes, you know, coming in to our nonprofit organization. And about 1.3, you know, million. If you look at this collectively, that's about 16% of the transient occupancy tax that flows in to the Quad Cities. The national average is about 50%, but it is one thing over the long haul that we're going to be continually trying to push those conversations at the board level with our city and county administrators, just to make sure people understand that it's a very competitive marketplace, and we want to try to grow that revenue from from our partners. I'm not going to get into like our SWOT analysis. Michelle's got some packets of material for you, and in there is our FY '25 business plan. It'll kind of highlight some of the things that we flagged as opportunities, strengths, weaknesses, threats. I think a couple of things for me as we as we think through where we are in the evolution of a destination organization that are weaknesses that I think we all need to kind of align over. Our facilities continue to be a challenge. We probably don't have enough capacity in terms of square footage to be more competitive with our comp set. So that is something that we always need to be taking a look at. How we're addressing accessible tourism, I think, is a huge opportunity. We've actually put some things into play that we're very proud of that I think are going to create some change. And then artificial intelligence. What is our role on the marketing and communication side of the things that we, you know, that we're going to try to drive over the next several years? And how does that work with us to hopefully create more value for the Quad Cities? We have a long-range plan. You've probably heard us talk a lot about this, our Tourism Master Plan priorities. There's essentially six ones that we're focusing on as an organization and really proud of the work that we're doing in that arena. And then eight strategic goals. You know, we might not necessarily emphasize, you know, all of these at any given moment in time, but the one that that really kind of jumps out as the the leading priority that we've heard from stakeholders, our board, is brand identity. How do we continue to push that envelope to get more people connected to the Visit Quad Cities brand? So the these are our goals. Again, all this material is enclosed in your packet and always happy to come back and talk a little bit more about long-range strategy. We have a five-year strategic plan specifically for sports. And we're we're coming up on that five-year plan. Obviously, COVID upended, but the timing of that, you know, certainly the TBK Bank Sports Complex as being this incredible regional, you know, asset and and a bright future is an important partner of Visit Quad Cities. But you'll kind of get a feel for where our where our pillars are, where our focus is specifically to sports. I also want to recognize Jeff Ryder. He serves in our our Sports QC group of advisors, where we've tried to bring in incremental leadership around the community to help to try to drive this forward. 56% of our group business, meetings, conventions, sporting events, is sports-specific. So 56%, that's a huge number, and it's why we need the strategy, we need to continue to invest in it. Shifting gears and then I'll answer any questions that you might have. I do want to, I want to thank Decker for his leadership. You know, we we've not had a contract at Visit Quad Cities with our municipal partners and county partners in our 34-year history. And it's something that our our board set as a priority a few years ago when I was hired. COVID kind of upended that timeline a little bit. But over the last couple of years, we've been working with Decker and his colleagues along with our board to to create an agreement where hopefully we've got more accountability with our public sector, you know, partners. We've got, you know, continued deliverables that we can share with with Decker and and his team. And then also making sure that our public sector funding partners understand our space because so much of what we do is future-casted. So we're looking at things that are in 2027 and 2030. And so if we don't know where that level of investment is coming in, it helps us hopefully define the things that we want to pursue, but it gives us those assurances from a financial perspective that we're going to be able to to deliver to the clients that we're trying to to work with. We've got some aggressive goals over the next, you know, five to 10 years, and that partnership investment is just critical to to what we do. So Decker, I just want to say, you know, thank you publicly for for the work that you're doing with us to to make this realized. It's not been the easiest process over a number of years, but I think we've we've made a tremendous progress, and I think it's something that hopefully is going to set us up much more strategically as a as a destination organization. So I'm going to pause there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. For me, my professional team is here. We're always willing to answer questions that you might have. And then I'll just I'll just end with this. There is nothing more powerful than a visit into the Quad Cities. It it drives this whole wheel. You cannot get people to take a job, to go to college, to do anything unless they come here first. So the more that we can put that emphasis into the visit side of the equation from an economic development perspective, we're going to be stronger positioned for the future. So I thank you for your investment in Visit Quad Cities. It does mean a lot to our Board of Directors, our professional team. It is a hyper-competitive space, and we can't do it without you. So thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Any questions? Jerry, go ahead.
No, thank you, Your Honor. My question is that we're spending 355 million investment.
Thousand.
A thousand, yeah. Investment for this tourism. Is there any way we can get a breakdown on our return on investment, what it's doing for Bettendorf? You know, you had big numbers for the Quad Cities, whatever, but a breakdown I'm looking at, say, if someone comes in with a new wants to build a new motel and they want a TIF for it. Well, when they, when we have a TIF, why, then we're losing some of those property taxes for 10, 20 years. At the same time, we're getting sales tax back and we're getting and we're getting hotel motel tax back. So is there any way to get a breakdown where we can evaluate each individual project for return on investment?
Alderman, I would answer it in a couple ways. I think we have, we have the data to maybe take a look at that. I think from a visitor perspective, and I think it's always important to remember this, visitors don't know boundaries and they don't care. They just want good stuff. And so the reality of it is you could have people that are staying in Illinois at an Illinois hotel, but they could be coming to the Isle. Or conversely, they could be staying at the Isle, but there could be an event at Vibrant Arena. And so it gets a little difficult to like myopically look at one particular community and to try to do an analysis. But I would tell you this, just by nature, and again, we're driving more than just hotel motel taxes, gaming revenue, sales tax revenue, food and beverage, like a broader complexion of revenue. If you look at the advent of TBK and what that's been able to do, quite frankly, during COVID, I don't know where our region would be without that investment that happened in that facility and the amount of business that we could program. Are there things that we can do with Datify to kind of get an analysis on what's, you know, happening in Bettendorf and particular projects? Yes. But in terms of the the ROI, the 354, I would look at as a collective, the 1.297, you know, last year is generating at minimum 30 million, but there's probably a plus, plus, plus to that for just things that are happening that we might not necessarily know about that that are happening. So is there a way to maybe do a deeper dive into that? But I would always caution any any public body that on the visitation side, especially in our market, you can get anywhere in the Quad Cities in 15 to 20 minutes. It is our value prop to the world, and people consume us in a very unique way. So they they might not just be necessarily staying in Davenport. They might be in three communities, spending money in three different communities. So it does get hard for us to analyze just one particular city, but I think there are some things that we could probably do with some events and maybe Datify to show you incremental value.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Greg.
Thank you, Your Honor. I maybe missed the the charter, your statement. Did I understand correctly that of the tourism events in the area each year, approximately 56% of those are sports-related?
That is correct. So out of what we classify as group business, Alderman, 56% of that group business, meetings, conventions, group tours, reunions, you name it, 56% of that is is sports. Now, that could be things in, yeah, it could be in the arena, it could be things at Green Valley, it could be at TBK, it could be in a variety of, you know, ways, but 56% is currently sports.
Do you have any data or understanding of how much the numbers changed because the TBK complex came on board?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's it's significant.
Did it go from like 30% to 50%?
Yeah, I don't want to quote a specific number on a percentile, but I think, you know, we can go back and take a look at the advent of that, you know, venue. We know, I mean, you're talking hundreds of events that have come in to that, you know, venue alone. You know, we've, we've invested, you know, boy, if you look at FY '25, probably about 200-some-thousand dollars just to acquire those events and put bid fees to try to host events at TBK, but it's it's been significant. And it's also been a regional impact. You're seeing benefit that's happening in Rock Island, in Davenport, East Moline, you know, Stony Creek, there's people staying there because they're, they either have, you know, maybe points at a particular hotel, maybe it's rate-based, and and certainly when you get 73 hotels in in the marketplace, they're they're trying to find a competitive rate, and the fact that you can get there in in 15, you know, 20 minutes. And the value of those two hotel properties right there, walkable, is tremendous. I mean, that's just only going to add to the overall visitor experience of what that entire corridor and that neighborhood has become, and it's been amazing. It's quite frankly, I think, one of the best stories in the Midwest, and will continue to pay dividends in our space.
Let me just ask one other question. If we were trying to grow the tourism pie, given that 50% of it is sports, would we be better served to try and support activities that will generate more sports interest or activities that would generate more cultural events? Say, I saw one of your slides had a Visit Quad Cities cultural event with the Hispanic Day of the Dead, I think it was, or festivals. Davenport has always done a lot of weekend festivals along the river in the summertime. Putting two festivals on one weekend, does that grow the pie or does that simply split the share? And should we be looking at a particular factor if we're trying to grow the pie? That's all the questions.
No, Alderman, those are great questions, and I would answer it this way, all of it, because you can't just be a one-trick pony. I know right now if we had expanded convention space, that we would able, we would be able to bring larger meetings and larger conventions into the Quad Cities. Like, we know that, we know, we have, we have a database. Our CRM has over 10,000 clients that we are mining every day with our professional team. And the the challenges that we have a lot of times are are the spatial requirements that those clients need. We do a bang-up job on small meetings. We could probably do more if we had expanded space. Festivals, like you're talking about Arts and Culture, yes. I think you need to diversify your portfolio of what you're bringing to the table, but that emphasis in sports. But that emphasis in sports, because sports is like Teflon, we can't necessarily marginalize that by focusing in other areas. We need to continue to invest and enhance that because it is proving positive and it's generating the income that we all want to realize. But yeah, we want to do more, but we want to do more with all of it.
I appreciate that. But obviously councils, cities have to make decisions based on revenues that are available to it. Trying to figure out whether it's better for us to double the size of the Quad City waterfront or to double the size of the TBK or to start doing street festivals, which in your professional opinion would be better for the idea of greater tourism in the Quad Cities?
What would be, what comes in second, right? What, of the fifty-six percent, that's a pretty big portion, but what's second, what's the second biggest draw to the Quad Cities?
Meetings, conventions.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, those are wonderful questions. I mean, we wouldn't do anything without a thorough assessment with Decker and his professional team to sit down and look at what could be done at the waterfront in terms of, you know, this amazing asset, Nancy Ballinger and her team do an amazing job. The same thing with Doug and his team, you know, looking at those assets and figuring out what is the right strategy, you know, moving forward. But I, but I also think, and I understand the resources, but these are conversations that we always need to be having so that we are competitively positioned because other communities outside of the Quad Cities are having these conversations every day. And they've got strategies in place and they're effectuating those strategies to try to develop more business for their communities. So it's hard for me to say, hey, let's, let's table TBK and let's focus on waterfront because we cannot do that as a community or we will not be competitively positioned. We have to do both. Now, yes, the marshalling of resources is always going to be the consideration for this body to determine that. But in our world, we've got to make sure that we are pushing those conversations forward with the public sector so they understand the dynamic of who we're competing with every day. We used to bid on events, I'll just use a meeting maybe at Waterfront Convention Center where we might have, I don't know, four or five competitors. Now we're having sixteen or eighteen because they know, these other communities understand the value of visitor dollars coming into the market. And the best part is they come into the market, we can all give them a big hug, right? And we can flip them over and we can shake them and all their money is going to come out of their pockets and then we'll send them on our way. That's the best part about tourism and what we're doing to try to drive value for visitor economy space. And I'm just telling you right now, our market is still not fully recovered. You know, a lot of people think, oh, we're through this. I mean, our revenues dropped down to about eight hundred and fifty-eight million during Covid and now we got that back up to one point two and almost one point three billion visitor economy, like all in. And, and we can't go backward. It's the only, it's the only way if we're going to try to drive more value for the region.
Other questions?
One more quick question. Thank you, Your Honor. I think the work that you're doing is great and I appreciate the presentation. Just out of curiosity, what are the new markets that you're targeting? St. Louis, Milwaukee, Madison, anything, any of those that are sort of peaking the list of focus for us?
It's a great question, Alderman. I think our bread and butter is, is still, I'm not going to go back to it. Are still going to be those drive to markets. Unfortunately, we just do not have, and this is not a money ask, but we just don't have the amount of expenses on an annualized basis to do a lot of advertising and marketing in a lot of markets beyond our drive to market. So you're not going to see us in Columbus, Ohio right now, right? And we wouldn't spend money in Seattle. That wouldn't make a lot of sense. Chicago, Chicago suburbs are critical. Milwaukee, actually Indiana and Indianapolis has started to move up. And it's interesting to kind of see, you know, those, you know, insights, you know, Des Moines, the stuff. Iowa, Illinois is always going to be the strongest. Wisconsin, Minnesota are strong states for us. Rural communities, larger communities, we would do more. And that's why the revenue that we're receiving, if we can deploy that beyond just business development, but in advertising and marketing, we're going to get more brand visibility. And I think that Midwest kind of profile is always going to be vital for us because you can get literally like, you know, within six hour radius point, we can reach a lot of people. Our airlift here is always, is a, is a challenge for us. We need to tackle that as a region, but we are going to continue to be a drive to market for the foreseeable future, next three to five years as we think through how to maybe tackle, you know, airlift as a region and as a strategy to try to drive more meetings and business.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, how long have you been here with us in the Quad Cities?
I moved here in November of twenty eighteen. And a year and a half in, I brought a global pandemic. So how am I doing for tourism?
But before that, we put together the River Pilot, we put together a strategic plan with outside consultants that we've continued to work. We hadn't really had a strategic plan before that, maybe really ever. And that has been a great, as we start our strategic planning process this weekend, we know the value of the yearly strategic planning and getting together for retreat, which we do. And this is where some of those conversations happened that Greg was raising in a, in a way that we're trying to push through that minefield and see what we can get done, but we have a five to eight to ten year plan that we, we do, just like we do here at City Council. One of the cool things that we're doing is the CTA program and Bettendorf, thanks to Jeff, is going to have a class here. Please help me sell everybody in this room who all ought to be there, what they're going to learn when they all show up.
Yeah, well, that's a good segue. Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, we are the only destination in Iowa and Illinois to offer this program. It was from dollars that we raised privately to help support it. And it's all about trying to create a stronger visitor experience and customer service delivery. We are not good at that. We have a lot of native haters. And what I mean by that is people that live in the Quad Cities that don't want to talk about how great it is. I'm a transplant. Boy, go talk to a transplant about the Quad Cities. They're going to rave about it. So it's about resident pride, it's about customer service, it's about workforce in terms of our hospitality industry. Our lodging association, you know, loves it, but it's also, it's something for our community leaders to be able to go through. It's fun, it's a couple hours, you're going to learn things that you might have not known about the Quad Cities. Because your job, quite frankly, and I'm a Bettendorf resident, my expectation is you're helping sell Bettendorf every day, right? To people that don't live here and the greater Quad Cities. So it's a great, it's a great initiative that we launched. We've got two hundred CTAs. We continue to grow it. It's not only for the hospitality industry, it's for the public sector, it's for the private sector. And I'm really grateful that Jeff kind of led that charge on November first, I believe is when we're doing it. I'm going to be part of that. We are huge believers in visitor experience and this is why. You never know who's going to be in your backyard. I guarantee you, if we all went over to have a cocktail at the Isle right now or maybe spend a little time at the table, there's going to be somebody in that facility that is not from here. And how we greet them, how we talk to them, how we build a relationship with them could lead into a broader economic development opportunity for us. So don't ever forget the people that are here that might not have familiarity with us. We need to always remind them of how important they are because you never know where it's going to lead. It is not a transactional relationship, it is a meaningful one. And that power of the word visit and that wheel is the most important takeaway that I want to leave you with tonight.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your investment with us. Thank you.
You bet. All right, let's move to our consent agenda item. This is item J, resolution approving a site development plan. For this presentation, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt.
You notice the way Dave put that juicy Yeti or whatever he had right there in front so you could see the brand. He did a great job with that.
Michelle's doing the same thing.
He brings it all the time.
I'm just glad we can call it the Mark again because that's
That's who you are.
That's who I am. Your Honor, just have one case to go with you tonight. It's a site development plan. This is a little bit different than maybe what we're used to seeing. It does involve our riverfront and industrial area, but wanted to walk you through it and just make you aware what's going on. Twenty-four zero six six is the case number. It's twenty-eight oh one Depot Street. There's not a building there. It's not an address you're going to be familiar with. But once I show it on the screen, I think you'll be able to recognize that it's just east of the, sometimes referred to as the E Building here on Depot Street. So this vacant lot is a lot in question. Legacy Marine is the applicant. Site development plan to put in a dock facility, so really almost nothing on the lot itself. It'll all be in the water. So a lot of federal jurisdiction here and a lot of reviews that are done by the federal and state government and not as much us. There will be parking in a driveline to access, to access the area. Just a reminder, our Depot Street right away, and this is actually easement access, and our bike path are up here. It kind of goes and skirts the edge of it and the bike path continues here. So no bike path on the riverfront portion. It's on the north portion. It's a little bit different. We do have obviously similar locations and uses nearby as well. It's an industrial use. It's planned for industrial use and it's zoned for industrial use, so we're happy to see all that alignment occur. It's part of the downtown master plan area, but industrial areas don't have that architectural design element piece to them that we do for like storefronts and things like that. Those regulations don't apply here. The property is obviously in the flood plain adjacent to our, our burn or our flood wall. And because of that, we do have a lot of involvement from the core engineers and the Iowa DNR. And all of those federal and state reviews have already happened and are continuing to happen as they, you know, continue to build, build the project. And I'll show you kind of a drawing of what it's going to look like. Here's the site plan. We have Depot Street and the bike path here. They'll get a curb cut, just one, a driveline and a parking lot. And then the real project is actually mostly in the water. There'll be a, a walkway that goes over a levee. It cannot impact our levee in any way, so we can't penetrate it. So all of the anchor points and all those things are either off the toe of the levee or in the water with what they call spuds, these big rails that go down into the water. So it really just sits on top of the levee. And that's a core engineer approval that's already occurred. And then the construction will be supervised by the core engineer. And then these docks out here will service tugs and tow boats. So it's not a commercial dock. You won't be using like, you know, your bass boat won't come up here and anchor or tie up. It'll be, you know, tugs that are used for construction purposes on the river and things like that. And the docks are kind of called floating barges or floating docks. Those will be located, you know, directly offsite in the water. There'll be a small electrical connection here for the parking lot. Otherwise, they're not connecting to our, you know, typical road water sewer connections. We don't really have those things going on here. So we have a positive staff report, which is in your packet. And then we do have one condition that if there is a flood condition, they take anything on those docks that could float away, cause problems and get it out of the way. And those docks are meant to float up and down. At a certain point, the docks possibly have to be removed and the core engineer helps handle that as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on September eighteenth. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mark? Greg A. and Greg J.
What do they do?
Well, he does, he actually builds levees. One of the things he does, he's a levee builder and a levee repairer. And so he spends a lot of time doing that. Think about the construction that occurs in the river when you have bridges and they need the pilings driven down. He's the guy that you call to bring construction barge out to do that. So he's a construction company, just happens to be, do a lot of it on the river.
There's a place to park his.
And that's where he'll, yeah, right now he's in Moline, I believe. I think he's running out of space there. He needs more space.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a curiosity thing. Looking at the aerial, it looks like the parcel has a fair amount of vegetation on it. As I see from the site plan, there's like a roadway that goes along the portion of it. And then there is like a parking area, two hundred by, about two hundred, where they're going to use storage and parking. What happens to the rest of the site, if any?
You know, from my perspective, he's not required to do any tree removal. Tree removal is a little bit problematic because he would have to comply with Indian abat and those indigenous species. And so he's already kind of gone through that process for the piece he's going to remove. So if he wants to remove more trees, he's going to have to work with the core on that as far as the timing.
Pretty much just leave it as it is?
My understanding is leave it as is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda is Consent J.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, any remaining consent agenda items, Mr. Plain? I know we discussed Consent O. At least the portion that specifically relates to Frozen Landing. And we'll have a little discussion about that during goal setting this weekend, whether or not we want to offer any alcoholic beverages at Frozen Landing. And therefore we could remove that portion from the Consent O, hoping that the rest would then just pass.
Correct, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on consent? Yes, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. On item B, my question is if we've already have cash in the sewer fund and those items are paid for, why are we taking them out of and putting them into, into the loan where we're going to incur an expense for interest?
Jason, you want to help us?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for clarity's sake, I do want to be clear that the debt referred to here in the resolution is the debt that council has already approved in moving forward. It's the nine and a half million dollar SRF loan that we'll be taking on to do the Spencer Creek project. As part of that project, there were some preliminary expenses, in this case, land acquisition and tree removal that are costs of the project and are part of that loan application through the SRF program, part of that nine and a half million dollars. But those funds will be spent prior to the loan closing. So this is just kind of a, a matter of course to adopt a resolution allowing us to reimburse ourselves from the loan proceeds for those costs. I would just tell you, Councilmember Sexer, these are project costs, part of the project budget. And if we were to not reimburse from the loan, to just pay for these with cash, it would negatively affect the sewer fund. It'd draw, draw that fund down. So that's not something that we typically, typically would want to do. We'll be using, you know, operational type cash for this little interim period before the loan closes. And I prefer to have that back in the fund.
All right, thank you. And then the second part of my question is, and I think we, I've asked this question before and got, got an answer, but just to reaffirm, this isn't adding additional fee to our sewer fee over and above the twenty cent increase that we already have planned, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other consent agenda items, any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? All right, that I'd like to entertain a motion that all remaining consent agenda items remain on consent for tomorrow night.
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, take a look at the vast number of things on the items to appear and let me know if you have any questions about those. All right, any items to be added to tomorrow night's agenda from a council member? All right, hearing that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you all. Appreciate you.